This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the board, please. You want to read this?
Commissioner Bowles?
Here.
Commissioner Butcher?
Here.
Commissioner Compost?
Here.
Commissioner Gandy?
Here.
And the minutes will show that Mayor TPO was an operator.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. I'd like Commissioner Compost.
Your time. Just roll call Shannon.
Need a second, sir.
Second. Now ask for a roll call.
Commissioner... Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Here.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Invitation and pledge. Skip over that. The prayer and the pledge.
Okay. If anyone could bow their head, lead us in prayer, please. Our heavenly Father, Lord, we want to thank you for this day, Lord. We ask, Lord, that you just send us relief from this heat, Lord. Also, one of blessed souls that are sick and not able to take care of themselves, blessed souls that are in harm's way. And, Lord, just bless this city of Levington that we should do the right things. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Plea of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag.
United States of the United States of New Mexico. Because here is the perfect country of the United States.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion for considerations of minutes on June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call Shannon, please.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Butcher?
Yes.
May I ask Shannon how my... I guess my mic is working. Can you guys hear me okay?
We do.
Yes, we hear you fine, Paul.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
So at this time, we'll have Commissioner and staff. Start with Wyatt.
Mayor Protem, commissioners, just to give you a quick update that the Commercial Street project is still on schedule. Talking with the superintendent this morning, they should be putting the top mat of asphalt on starting on the 23rd. And that will be a four-day process and then moving forward to the driveways. Doing the turnouts and everything, paving those. Other than that, that's all that I have.
Commissioner Gavin?
I have a couple of questions, Wyatt.
Yes, sir.
On the 700 block of Baguio. This past... Last week, we had some rain on the fifth. Go by. And down in that little cul-de-sac there. I was asked to come up and took some pictures of it, and they get flooded pretty good down there. And I was wondering if anything could be done about that.
We can definitely take a look. I know there is on the end of that cul-de-sac, there is a... A portion where it does drain. It might need to be cleared out, but we can definitely tell. Get the street department to take a look at that, sir.
Okay, and I'll get with you Wyatt on that. I got some pictures of it. And I understand it's hard to see when there's no rain. I know that the gentleman said that they raised their driveway and areas around the side of the road to keep the water from flooding into their house. The other question I have is in front of the courthouse. The... In front of the handicap area marking. That, I seen trucks down there the other day too. Trying to funnel that water out that was sitting in front of there. And is there any way of fixing that? Hey Wyatt?
We've actually... I'll let James take over that one. It was a... I'll let James speak on that behalf.
So we are... We've already lived in solutions on that. However, with the construct, the upcoming, hopefully, construction of Main Street, we don't want to go ahead and make improvements right there until we figure out exactly what their drainage plan is. So our plan to fix and then the state's plan for drainage will actually work together. Okay. Okay. And other questions, Wyatt?
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Gandy, do you have anything for Wyatt? I'll do the one. Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
You have anything for Wyatt?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Gary?
Yes, Mayor Protem and Commission. I have nothing new to report.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Daley?
Nothing to report, sir.
Ms. Shannon?
Nothing.
Commissioner Bowles?
No questions.
Commissioner Gandy?
I have nothing to say this morning.
Commissioner Compost?
I'm good. Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on.
Chief Rodriguez.
Chief Rodriguez?
No, Mr. Rodriguez.
Sir? Terrence is out. Chief, second. James?
Mayor Protem, commissioners, the only thing I have to report is this weekend, Friday and Saturday at Fairgrounds, we're going to do another pop-up drive-in movie. Each night, Friday night will be Birds of Prey. And then Saturday night will be I Still Believe.
All right. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Shushan, anything?
Yes, James, I received a message as far as the head plan. And you just relay that, relay that so that we're all aware.
Sure. So we received word today that President Brian of the company, his father-in-law, passed away. Early this morning, I believe it was, or maybe it was early yesterday morning. So the closing has been delayed. Hopefully, we'll get a firm date for next week. He's just trying to make some arrangements up there with the passing of his in-law. And all the permits, everything is all there, everything is ready to go? Yes, sir. They actually received a hard copy of the permits early last week in the mail. So all of the... All three permits are in place. It's just a matter of the EDC and Big Dog Industries sign on the dotted line. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. We're good. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patrick?
Mayor Protem and commissioners, nothing to report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I guess at this time, we're going to move on to public comment. And if you would, please state your name. Make your comment. You have allowed three minutes, and we'll go from there. All right. Okay, if there's no further public comments, we're going to move on to... There's no action items. We're going to move on to action items.
Mr. Pro. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2020-049, Planning and Zoning Commission Appointments. Just one second. That would include... Brian Cooper, Randy Cuddy-Grew, Betty Price, and David Camp.
I'll second that.
There was only four positions? Okay. So, okay, and is it the fact that she had the highest... Is it the attendance? That's why I left. Yes, sir.
We have a second. By Commissioner Compost?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
We'll have another motion, please. Oh.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to consider Resolution 2020-050, Parks and Recreation Board Appointment with the lone member to be approved as well.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Gandy.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, we have another motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2020-51, Approval Agreement Between the City and New Mexico DOT For Temporary Construction Permits and Quick Plan D for the Highway... Oh, NM18 Highway... NM18 Roadway Project.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Compost? Do we have anything on that, James?
Yes, Mayor Protem, commissioners. So this is very similar to what we had previously approved. However, they had some additional areas that were not included in their original request. There is a temporary construction permit. As you can see, it follows the drainage canal, I guess you would say, that crosses Chaparral Park and enters Sexwood Industrial. So DOT is requesting a temporary construction permit there. That's on the... That would be on the northeast corner of Park. They are also asking for two quick plans of property. One is a small section of property right along New Mexico 83 that the city owns, which is part of where those trees are at, where the drainage comes off, New Mexico 83. We've owned that for years. This, and you can tell, or I'm sorry, I believe in original documents we have, this will actually tie into a large drainage plan that the DOT is actually going to acquire the property from the Valencias. There's another quick plan, a little bit further to the west along there, which incorporates some... It's a small section of city-owned property that has never been used, and there's no intention of using that. So this resolution would allow us to execute those three.
Okay, do we have any questions for James from the commissioners?
So this is on the south side of 83. Yes. East of Commercial Street, back there in the wooded area. Yes. They're going to tie that drainage there into that other piece of property that goes above the swimming pool. Yes, sir. All right. And then I guess what the Valencia's a large portion of that, they own. Yes, sir.
So it's all actually going to be routing to the lake itself?
No, sir. It will not route to the lake. We can't discharge groundwater, surface water like, or as far as drainage into the lake. We have to keep it out. So it will actually follow, go down industrial, but it will not go into our lake.
That's good. Do we have any further? Roll call Shannon, please.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make the motion for Resolution 2020-052, Approval of Utility Cooperative Agreement Between the City and New Mexico DOT.
I'll second that.
Second, by Commissioner Bowles.
Mayor Protem, commissioners, so as you know, part of the Main Street reconstruction project involves the city wanting to replace our, or actually needing to replace our water and sanitary sewer lines that run right in the middle of the project. Estimated price tag on that was $1.4 million. And as you all are aware, with the different changes at the state level and, of course, our economy, we basically had to tell the DOT, we don't have the funding for this. From local or even grant reauthorizations, or there was a $600,000 appropriation on the table that was lined up and vetoed by the governor during the session, the regular session. So what DOT basically implied to us was we don't want to see a $20.5 million project disappear or get pushed, because if it does get pushed, we don't know when the work would actually ever begin. So essentially, what they had said is that they're going to go and pay for it with us paying for it later. It's sort of what they call the utility cooperative agreement. One good news, a piece of news that we did receive is that we had $352,000 that we requested be reauthorized for this project. That was granted. It was not cut. So now we're only looking at about $1.1 million to cover that. So what DOT has sent over is a draft of the agreement, and they would like for us to basically negotiate with them for a reasonable amount of time. Gary and I did sit down, and payment, repayment of this amount would not begin until the project's complete. And DOT would send us an invoice, and we're... We told them, well, we would like to, for you to consider a four-year period for us to repay this. Another thing that we are currently working on is another grant. We did make it through the preliminary phase of this. However, we haven't received any additional instructions or any further applications for this. It's actually economic alliance. It's actually tied to COVID. How we can... How we justify how this would help with mitigation from any type of future events. Basically, we need water for sanitation purposes, and they really liked how we worded it. But this, if we did receive that grant, we could actually use that when we were in the current debt. But what this resolution allows us to do is to finalize that, of course, with Patrick looking over the agreement to make sure that we are covered legally. This gives us the ability to move forward with this by the end of the month.
Okay, we have some questions.
I got lost in the numbers somewhere, so come in again. Because we're $600,000 or $1.5 million, so I got lost right in there as well. So, yes, sir. Well, Commissioner Gandy, one of the things, the estimated price tag for the rerouting of the utilities, city-owned utility, is $1.4 million. When we were first working on this, we had all of the funding in place between state grants and a small local match. However, a lot of those grants disappeared whenever the oil and gas industry went down. They were freezing. I know the governor had... We requested a $600,000 appropriation in the January session, which it made it through. And that was the one of the three projects that the city was awarded that the governor lined up and vetoed. So that really put us in a bind as far as finding the funding to proceed with this particular project. So we're looking at finance at one point? About one minute. Yes, sir. I'll make sure I got my numbers right.
So you said repayment on this project would start when it is completed? When are they looking to complete it?
Um, I believe preliminary timelines, they had it down as like a two-year project. However, they haven't even left this project to bid yet. They may still be anywhere from six to 12 months out from even awarding the particular bid. So we don't know. I'm estimating anywhere from an 18-month to two-year construction process, since it is a complete rework. So we're still... We're three years, probably three years out before they even create... At the first asphalt, okay. And this still gives us plenty of time also to apply for other grants, additional capital outlay, whereas repayment using local funds would be a last, the last option. And we still, even at the end of the project, would have four years to pay for.
What about the $200,000 from leaving and the $200,000 from water? Are you still going to put that in there?
No, sir.
Hey, James?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. If this is approved, when will we be required to start making payments on it?
Well, that would be at the completion of the project. And as that utility agreement is worded, is that they would invoice us on completion of the project. So we don't have an estimated construction timeline. We're thinking maybe to a two-year from start to finish. So we have potentially still be three years out from project completion.
So the resolution mentions a one scenario of three-years payment, but at the bottom it says four years. So you're saying it will be four years? Is that correct?
Well, the resolution specifically doesn't say that. However, in the staff summary...
Right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, staff summary does. It could be anywhere. I know originally they had said, well, what about three years? And I know I had... I said, well, I would rather have four years.
Okay. Does that need to be in the resolution?
The way the resolution is actually worded at this point is to give myself, Gary, and Patrick the ability to negotiate the agreement. They still have to run that up their chain to find out if that is an acceptable amount of time. And from preliminary conversations, it seems that they were, they were very open to that.
Okay. All right, very good.
So as far as the funding for this project, what are you expecting to get? Because I know that our money is just kind of tight. So as far as getting this project fully funded, partially funded?
So, well, Commissioner Bowles, I know with the one grant application I just mentioned, it would only be about a 10% match. So we could utilize either, you know, a combination of the water funds or the legal funds that we initially were going to use for that. And hopefully, we would get awarded that and help solve a lot of those problems. If not, it would be a combination of different funds that we have. We also could request additional capital outlay appropriations for it to help cover all of those expenses.
So just concern then, do we have the monies available to us that we get into this? I understand the roads want to be done. Everybody wants roads done. I'm just looking at the end of the day, do we have enough at the end of the day to take care of this? That's my concern.
Right, and I think given the amount of time, considering that we're probably two to three years out from final completion, that will allow us enough enough time for not only seeking other, other means of paying for it other than just using local dollars, it allows us to actually recoup from and hopefully recover economically as well. I love the... So where we... As far as the wellness center, how far away? I wonder every year if we were tied into that.
We have three years left on that agreement.
Basically, if hypothetically, about the time we would get through with that one, it's possible that could be, you could get that for money there. And then hopefully with the... That'll give the camp plan a few years to get some time under the belt and maybe see some gains from that. So it's possible in a three-to-four-year window that...
Well, I'm saying I'm not opposed to it. I'd just like to see some of these things moving forward before we jump into something else. That's all.
I totally agree. But basically, this is one of those last options that we have. If you all don't feel comfortable moving forward with that, I'll be happy to relay that to NMDOT.
Just personally, James, don't have a problem with it. I think we've been waiting for a while, so I would hate to lose this funding, you know, from NMDOT because of us stalling on it.
I just have one thing, James. What kind of interest rate are we looking at on that?
There is no interest rate on that.
Oh. So it's a good thing.
Yes, that's...
What you get is to pay back.
Yes. And even then, you know, we're just hypothetically saying it might be a year. The way the state moves right now, two years before they start the project. So we're four years out, so I think maybe...
Right.
So I want to most roll the dice and go for the best. But they're not moving real fast on a whole lot of projects.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Shannon, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Motion, please?
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2020-053, Approval Agreement Between the City and Valencia Land Development for Utility Extension Reinvestment to the City.
Second.
I'm second by Commissioner Compost. Gandy?
Yes, Mayor Protem, commissioners. If you recall, I believe it was back in January, we agreed to go ahead and fund up to $150,000 for extension of water and sewer lines on North Main Street. On the graphic, you can see the hospital, the apartment complex, the item, area highlighted in green is where the utilities would be. This is to accommodate housing development and also business opportunities up there with the primary land developer pledging to cover anything in excess of $150,000. We've also had two of the... Or I'm sorry, the owners of property located to the south of the Valencia Land Development property. They have also, they've actually contributed, paid the city $25,000 towards this. So that leaves us $175,000. The bonding company, the... I'm sorry, but the development company did get quotes and was fixing to engage a contractor to do this work. However, the bonding company didn't, was not going to issue a bond on the project because the payments were coming from two different sources. So in order to keep the project moving forward, instead of us, I'm sorry, instead of us providing payment to the contractor and the development company paying their half to the contractor, now this agreement changes it to where we are, we are moving forward with it as the project lead through a CES procurement process. This way, we don't have to go and get it. It's completely, we use CES all the time. And that way, the bond is in, the city's named because this is public infrastructure, and the development company actually pays the city for anything in excess of the actual cost that exceed $175,000. And that will be paid to us as soon as we get the quote, the CES quote that engages that purchase order. We submit that invoice to the developer, and they have 15 days to provide us that payment. So it's just, it's just changing the way the money, it's who gets paid in the land. And it all comes down to the bonding issue.
Any discussions?
So what again was the bonding issue? The original project was the city was going to enter into an agreement with what Constructors Aint is the company that the development company engaged to do the utility installation. So originally, there was going to be a portion of the contract that was between the city and construction. So originally the contract, there was going to be a portion of the contract that was between the city and Constructors Inc., which read that we would pay $175,000, anything in excess of that, the development company would be responsible for. And then the, the development company would have a contract with constructors. So there's two different contracts, but the bonding issue, the bonding company didn't know who to issue the bonds to. They weren't going to issue both of them because it was split, it was just a simple contract issue. So instead of having two, two, we're still engaging constructors, the difference is, is that the city will be making the payment to them through CES.
So how many other companies do you do a deal like this with? As far as with the bonding, having bonding problems and?
Uh, we've actually never run into this issue.
Right. As far as what happens after 15 days if you don't receive your payment, what's with that?
Well, there are a legal, legal ways, uh, legal procedures that we can follow, the contract does specify that. I doubt that, I, I highly doubt that we are going to be left hung out to dry on this. Once we get the quote and the security is, is once we get the quote, that is the price. And we're going to invoice that company and they're going to just transfer the money to us and then we'll be able to pay it. So we'll know well in advance if there's going to be particular issues with payment. We doubt it because they do need this in order to move forward with the other development projects and more.
Any further discussion? Shannon, roll call please.
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
No.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? The yeas said that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020 oh 54, permit, from being social distancing practices slows spread of COVID-19 to ensure businesses may continue to open at greater capacity.
Second.
I have second by Commissioner Compos. James?
Yes, sir. So, uh, as you know, uh, the, uh, state has amended their public health order, um, to, uh, for variety of things, but, uh, one of the things that was brought up was the fact that in state law, uh, in, in particular, this 12 dash 10 dash 10A, uh, which is NMSA 1978, it's part of the all hazards emergency plan. Uh, the city essentially, because we are deemed a political subdivision, we're required to comply. Uh, what does that mean? Uh, is that, for instance, like the masking mandate, I know everybody knows that, uh, whenever you come to city hall now or any city facility that's open to the public, we do require the maskings. And, uh, the reason is, is that we are trying to avoid potential fines for violation of the public health act. Uh, we're also violation, are trying to prevent any, uh, jeopardy to our liability insurance that the city has. Uh, so there has not been any lawsuits, uh, that we're aware of, uh, that have been submitted or heard by any, any judge in the state of New Mexico that say that any of these requirements are, are against, you know, are unconstitutional or any injunctions, so basically we don't have a choice but to follow. Uh, you know, for instance, mandatory mask use and things like that. Uh, so, but what this resolution does is three things, is, is essentially just adopting the, what they call the COVID safe practices or even more basic than that, universal precautions, uh, as a city policy for our facilities in order to save lives. But also to prove that, hey, we are actually doing our part because we want to make sure that bullet point number two, businesses have the opportunity to open up in a greater capacity. Uh, because if you saw any of the statistics, uh, last week, we did see, you know, statewide, a 79% increase over a two-week period in the amount of positive cases. But actually in Lee County alone, uh, we had an 8.6% increase in our spread, uh, to the, to the folks here in Lee County. The third bullet point, of course, and the goal of us adopting a COVID safe practice, uh, is to reduce the potential for individuals to be harmed economically through the imposition of fine fees. Uh, by violation, this has nothing, nothing in reference to us saying, hey, we, we are enforcing any type of business closure. Basically, this resolution says that this is what we're doing. We're going to maintain our current city facility capacities, uh, just to make sure that we ensure social, social business. Uh, we're going to provide places in our open facilities where folks can wash their hands. And if hand washing facilities aren't readily available, hand sanitizing stations. Uh, some of the same message that we've been promoting since this, this whole, uh, pandemic has started. In addition to it would be a city policy for mask use by everybody, employees as well as the public, for any visitors, uh, to our city facilities. In addition to that, what the city would like to do is promote and encourage the use of COVID safe practices by individuals and businesses. And promote and encourage individuals to make sure that they follow the public health orders. The goal is, I know that when we were first discussing this with several folks, Chamber of Commerce's, uh, the economic development organizations, a couple of cities, was we did not want, we did not want what happened last Thursday to happen. Which is for the state to come down and restrict business again, which they did. That was the one thing we wanted to avoid. So we're just asking folks, you try it, you try it for three weeks, you know, wash your hands, wear a mask. Hopefully that will work, it will slow the spread and the state will allow us to open up and continue opening up so we can get past this. So we can keep our, we can protect our businesses here in Livingston as well as in Lee County. And that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any words from the commission? Open it up.
Uh, I did, I, I do want to say, it, it's what we're stating, and I'm saying it to the public, to the people. Where our main point is to protect the city. We're not trying to tell businesses how to, you know, what they need to do or, you know, we're just trying to do what's right for the city employees, this, you know, that's going on at city hall, city facilities. No way does this resolution, uh, have an effect on any of the businesses in town. It's just stating, it's just kind of educating people, you know, take care of your neighbor. That's all it's saying. We're not enforcing it here at the city or anything like that, or law enforcement or anything like that. It's just to protect the city employees and the city businesses, the city hall, motor vehicles, libraries, and so on. That's all I got to say about that.
Anything else, Commissioner Bowles, Commissioner Gandy, Commissioner Compos?
I agree, Commissioner, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Butcher. So I'm on board with it as well, well put, thank you.
Shannon, may I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Butcher?
I'm going to say no, ma'am.
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Okay, there we have it. The yeas said, moving on?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2020 dash 55, approval of agreement between the city of Livingston and, uh, southeastern New Mexico Economic Development District, uh, slash car. One plus three, Council of Governments, that's it.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Bowles?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, this is an annual agreement, it is a budgeted expense, $3,303. According to the staff summary, it's just $3. Uh, the, uh, Council of Governments, uh, they provide a lot of our, uh, support as far as legislative actions, uh, as well as grant administration. Uh, they represent not only Livingston, Lee County, but, uh, Denny County, Chavis County, and I believe it's also Curry and Roosevelt.
May I have any, uh, comments from the commissioners?
Yes, James, uh, as far as this agreement, you've had this agreement for?
Oh, gosh, uh, but as long as, yeah, it's been a long.
Do you feel what they offer is very beneficial?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir, okay.
Any further comments? Ms. Shannon, roll call please.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion for resolution 2020 dash 56, certification of the city's capital asset inventory.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Compos?
If, if I may, your mayor in commission, this, uh, or mayor pro tem in commission, this is Gary, the finance director. I would actually like to ask to postpone the approval of this list and until another, uh, meeting. I realized this evening that the very list that we've given you is our last year list, not the new list, which we need to give. And I apologize for that, I did not review what I had my staff provide and that's my mistake. I should have reviewed it, but I didn't until tonight. So, so I'm asking if, if we put this on hold because it's, it's not something that we need to have approved this evening. And I have time until the auditors get here and I apologize.
On the top there, it says the date, 7/1, 2019 to 6/30/2020.
Uh, yes, sir, those are the correct dates, apparent, and that's where I needed to review the list. Apparently a lack of understanding on my staff's part on how to enter the information in our in-code software prevented all the new assets for this, that period being put in. So we're, we're basically missing over $3.4 million worth of assets. So, yes, we've got the, yes, sir.
You're suggesting that we table this at this time, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gandy, would you like to, I guess, amend your motion and I'll second it?
Uh, yes, Shannon, may I amend my motion please, ma'am? To, uh, table the, uh, resolution 2020 dash 56 until our next scheduled meeting?
And I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Okay, Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
We'll have another motion please.
Mayor Pro Tem, may I make a motion for resolution 2020 dash 57, uh, certification of the city's June 30/30/2020 inventory?
We have a second by Commissioner Bowles?
Yes, your mayor pro tem in commission, this is the inventory list that is required for state of New Mexico to have available for our auditors when they arrive. And each of the departments, as you can see, have gone through and compiled their specific department's inventory and given us the proper totals on that. Uh, so we are in compliance with this list.
Any further questions with Gary?
I'm sorry.
So that I'm, uh?
No.
Ms. Shannon, may I have a roll call please?
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Motion please.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make, make a motion to consider accounts payable.
I second.
I have a second by Commissioner Gandy?
If I may, your mayor pro tem in commission, I, our single largest expense was a semi-annual liability and auto insurance payment to Reed Insurance, which is near the bottom of the first page, the 315,000. Our second largest payment was the beginning of what's happening for North Commercial Street, uh, to Constructors Inc. for the 195,179. Do you have any questions? I'm available for answers.
Uh, Gary, change healthcare for 12?
Yes, sir. The 12,000 we paid to change healthcare, you're going to see, uh, a greater frequency of that. They are our third-party organization assisting us with the collection, actually handling all of the collections of our ambulance service. So they're helping us a great deal. And we have, uh, I can't remember what the total is, the city manager could probably remember, but I want to say right now about a million and a half dollars on the books that they're collecting for us.
Thank you.
Gary, the Stanley Field Brown, Stanley Brownfield Motorplex?
Ah, that's a good one to ask about, let me see if I wrote the note on that. Okay, the Stanley, that has to do with, uh, a repair of one of our ambu- ambulances. And that's all the detail that I have for that $6,600.
So general maintenance or what was that involving?
Unfortunately, the detail doesn't give me more on the, on the financial report. I would have to ask the fire chief more on that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I got a question about, I think this is, this is a, probably needs to be asked by James or Gary, if he's got the information. James, regarding the ambulance transports, has that increased, uh, in this pandemic? And if so, how are we handling it?
Uh, well, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Compos, uh, actually I had that conversation last week. Uh, I know that there was, uh, a little bit of a decrease of inter-facility transports, uh, initially. Uh, however, they are back to their average of four, uh, to five level transfers per day. Or shipped, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, for shipped?
Yes, sir.
Are we having the manpower to handle those?
Uh, we are, uh, they, uh, right now they are actually able to handle, uh, the current load. I know that, uh, they're making sure that the crews are, uh, as far as the battalion chiefs are making sure the crews have plenty of downtime as far as rest. Uh, but they are, uh, maintained at this point.
Very good, thank you, James.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Which was the big two or three ships?
No, they're, they're worth 48 hours, 48 on.
Roll call, Ms. Shannon?
Commissioner Compos?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Motion please?
Make a motion, uh, Jerry?
Second. Second. Second.
Jerk. Roll, roll call, please.
Roll call.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Combs?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes. Maybe a jerk.